We'll call the October 7th, 2025 Williams County Board of County Commissioners Meeting to order. Beth, will you call roll please?
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Bo?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
We have a quorum. We will proceed. If everybody would please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item C, consent agenda. What are the wishes?
Make motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item D is public comment. This is the portion of the agenda that we opened for public comment. If there's something that's not currently on the agenda that you want to address the board with, now is the time. Seeing none, we will move on. Next section E is a new section. I had talked to staff about adding this because we do get resolutions and proclamations at times and we were kind of blanket statement them. And so I thought we would bring them to the board and we can make decisions as to whether we approve or don't approve. And the first one we have on here is National 4-H Week Proclamation. And it's a purpose is to formally recognize the positive impact of 4-H, amplify the organization's professional youth development programs, and help generate public support, encourage community engagement, and honor the contribution of 4-H members, volunteers, and educators. Pretty controversial group, I think. I see there's some of them here. Thank you guys for coming. We appreciate you coming. We'll turn it to the board. What are the wishes?
Make a motion to approve the National 4-H Week Proclamation.
Is there a second?
One second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, the next one on there is Theodore Roosevelt Expressway Corridor, Porch Plains Alliance Resolutions, and there are three of them. I will, I'll go ahead and read the, if I can get it to open, I'll read the title of each one of them. I believe we can roll all these into one if you so choose. Resolution 2025-10-07.1, resolution supporting future interstate designation for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and a portion of Porch to Plains Priority Corridors and numbering future interstate segment. Number two is 2025-10-07.2, a resolution supporting the future interstate feasibility study for Heartland Expressway, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and a portion of Porch to Plains High Priority Corridors. And resolution 2025-10-07.3, a resolution supporting the future interstate highway formula program. Any comments, questions?
Just noticed in that first resolution, right under Theodore Roosevelt, Expressway Roosevelt is spelt incorrectly. Okay, it's spelt Rosevellit.
Good catch. That was why I had a hard time reading it, obviously. What are the wishes?
I'd make a motion to support all three resolutions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. And I would just like to tell the 4-H guys, if you gotta get going, you sure can. Because we're gonna go into planning and zoning, so don't feel like you have to sit here and wait. You know what? We could sure do that. Let's slide it in right now. And just if we can keep it fairly brief, because we do have planning and zoning we gotta get into. So a couple minutes from each would be just awesome. We'd love it. I should have asked after we did the first one. So come on up, introduce yourself, please, for the record. Come on down. And that mic, you don't have to push the button. You just go ahead and talk right into it.
Right here? Okay.
Right there.
My name is Kenzie Doobie. I'm 16. I've been 4-H for six years. Through 4-H, I've learned many things like responsibility, accountability, leadership, and how to step out of my comfort zone, just to name a few. It's more than just a club to me. It's given me room to grow and explore in agriculture and many areas of science.
And was this out of your comfort zone or not? No, good job. Good job.
I'm really Wilkinson. This is out of my comfort zone. I've had many great experiences through 4-H. I've shown swine since I was five. And that's led me to have a passion for swine and their industry. And I've actually started raising and showing my own bred pigs. And I've shown beef since I was about six. And that's created a lot of opportunities to have relationships with producers. And I've learned a lot from them. And I've also been part of our dog program. We are one of the only counties in the state who has one and even has a dog show. And I've been fortunate enough to be able to compete and do well at our show in both aspects of the obedience and agility. And I've done the livestock judging team. I've been part of that for about five years. And that's definitely helping me get through today. You learn a lot about that in public speaking and a lot about selecting animals, which is a big thing in what my line of work is hoping to be. And I've developed a passion for agriculture and youth in agriculture. And that's what's kind of led me towards the pursuit of an ag education degree from NDSU. And I hope to bring that back to the community and be able to help youth here too. So, thank you.
Excellent. And you did not seem uncomfortable.
Thanks.
So, we appreciate it. Thank you guys for coming. And have a great week.
Thank you, ladies.
Absolutely.
Just in front of the desk. In front of the big one. Yep, yep, yep. There we go. All right. You got it. Okay. There you go. Thanks. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Just of note too, Scott, what's the total 4-H number, student numbers countywide now?
About 260 to 270. I have, I can run the exact numbers for y'all if you want, but that's about my estimate.
No, thanks. So just two of 260 kids countywide. I mean, that's pretty impressive. So, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we're gonna go into planning and zoning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Houghan with County Planning. The first item we have today is LU-0075-25, which is Jaden U. Inc. with Magnus Services on behalf of Donald Suntagan. They're requesting a conditional use permit to construct a freshwater pond within the agricultural zoning district. This is located in the north half of the northeast and the northeast of the northwest of Section 23, Township 158 North, Range 96 West, being South Meadow Township. We have not received comment back from the township on this item. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a freshwater holding pond. Subject property is approximately 121 acres total and within the agricultural zoning district. The pond will be approximately 500 feet by 419 feet and 15 feet deep and will be approximately 49 acre feet volume. Purpose of the pond is to store freshwater, which will be used to aid and support oil well development in the area. The pond will be lined and have a maximum slope of three to one. The pond will have a three strand barbed wire fencing around the perimeter with gated access to the operations area. Water for the holding pond will be obtained through the approved water permit 6281. Access to the subject property is off of 75th Street Northwest. When planning and zoning heard this item in September, they did recommend approval seven to zero.
Is the applicant present? Do you have anything you want to add? Okay. We will turn it to the board. What are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve this conditional use permit.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Discussion. Roll call please.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
So the next one we have today is LU-0076-25. Heather Brewer with Hamlin Water on behalf of Russell Goffian. They're requesting a conditional use permit to construct a freshwater holding pond within the agricultural zoning district. This particular one is located in the southeast, northeast of Section 5, Township 157 North, Range 100 West, which is Athens Township. And they have recommended approval on this item. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to construct a freshwater holding pond on the subject property. The parent parcel is a total of 151 acres, while the site will be only a portion of the property. According to the applicant, the pond will be approximately 49.9 acre feet. It will be approximately 500 by 235 with a maximum slope of three to one. The pond will be lined with a plastic liner. The site will also be fully fenced and will have berms that will be seeded for erosion control. Purpose of this pond is for storage of freshwater to be utilized in oil well production. The pumping equipment to be utilized for this pond is a riser that will connect the pond to a nearby pad. Pad will be equipped with a diesel pump and mobile water transfer equipment. The water source for this pond is a Blue Ridge Industrial Water Well. Access to the freshwater pond site is off of US Highway 85. When planning and zoning heard this item, they have recommended approval.
Is the applicant present? No, I don't see him. Okay, turn it over to the board. What are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve LU-0076-25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This one is LU-0077-25. Select Water Solutions LLC is requesting a conditional use permit for the existing special waste landfill previously owned by Edition Disposal Inc. This is located in the southeast, southeast, southwest, southeast, east half, southwest, Government Lot 3 and Government Lot 4 in Section 19, the east half of the northeast of Section 25, and the east half northeast, southwest northeast, southeast northwest, northwest northeast, Government Lot 1, 2, and then also the northeast northwest of Section 30, all located within Township 153 North, Range 103 West, being Hardscrabble Township. We have not received comment back on this particular project from them. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the existing special waste landfill previously owned by Edition Disposal. Select Water Solutions LLC has acquired the subject property and is required to reapply for the existing conditional use permit as they are non-transferable. This site has been utilized as a special waste landfill since the 1990s. The applicant is also working with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality Solid Waste Program to have Permit 0079 reissued into their name. The site has an existing stormwater management plan recorded in 2019. The subject property consists of a total of 639 acres. However, the special waste landfill is only approximately 100 acres. Access to the subject property is off of 53rd Street, or 53rd Avenue, 153rd Avenue, which is also known as County Road 5. With this one, planning and zoning commission did hear this item and did recommend approval eight to zero.
Okay, is the applicant present? Don't see anybody, so. If you have a comment, you can please come up. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Susan Zimmerman and Edition Disposal borders our north pasture, so it's their south border. And myself and other neighbors have been concerned forever about the, you know, the material that they accept and what they do. I did talk at zoning and, or yeah, zoning and planning too. But I just want to say, I realize this is kind of a name change thing more than anything. But there's coal veins there. They had to buy Art Nan Anderson's land because their wastewater kept running through a coal vein onto Art Nan's land. We've got a dam that spring fed, so it must be coming through coal veins. So I do worry about leakage from that, what they've taken in the past. They're putting in a new disposal. It's like for saltwater, but they're gonna take frac fluids. And what concerns me about that is you don't really know what's in them. I did call AstroChem to check on how much it would cost to test water. And she, first thing, wanted to know what I want to test for. Well, it's proprietary, so you don't know exactly what's in it. I did Google it a little bit, so I have kind of an idea. But basically, to test for pretty much anything would be about $1,200. So I guess I just want you to be aware that the neighbors really are concerned about this facility. I know they have test sites on site, but I just don't know how much that contamination can spread. And frac sand can be radioactive too, and she didn't know if they tested for that or not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments? Okay, we'll turn it to the board. What are the wishes?
Just a question. Does the DEQ, they must do regular testing?
I believe during planning and zoning, I feel like Kim Henderson, the one who's kind of spearheading this project for Select Water, she said for sure two times a year, but she was thinking it was at least three though. But she knew for sure two times.
And do they only test on the, on their property? Or is there test wells, you know, downstream at all?
From what she said, from my memory, she said that they're only required to test their site only, not offsite.
Would if, if Mrs. Zimmerman requested the DEQ to test that water instead of her having to test it, would that be an appropriate path?
I'm not sure if they by law can do that since it's not on the site. I'm unsure.
May I add, good morning Commissioners, Cameron Heimer, Development Services. Yeah, this was discussed at planning and zoning as well. The topic that, or this project is just a simple name change though, through the county. The actual saltwater disposal well is regulated by the NDIC. So we're not able to permit that or add conditions on that portion of it. We're just looking at the special waste landfill.
Yeah.
But there is room in a CUP for conditions. I mean, like if they're dragging mud out onto the highway, that type of stuff, correct?
Certainly for the special waste landfill.
Okay. Mrs. Zimmerman, do you, Zimmerman, apologies. Have you witnessed mud, rocks, dirt, anything of the kind up on the highway after trucks? Okay. Okay. Where would that be appropriate to add into the permit? Conditions, in the conditions portion?
Correct.
Yeah, so Chapter 3-2-2, the Williams County Zoning and Subdivision Ordinances, it does say that the Board of County Commissioners can add items to that for considering any other factor deemed necessary in order to provide and promote the public health, safety, and welfare. And I think to clarify, I was just trying to make sure we distinguish between the saltwater injection well and the special waste landfill.
Gotcha.
Okay, so any other questions for Cameron or Michelle?
I mean, if there's motion and second to approve it, can we add the conditions? Or does that need to be done before we move and second it?
I would say it would have to be done before.
Okay.
And moved with such things.
Well, I'm trying to find in this paperwork, because it's what, 43 pages long? Where's the?
Page six of 43, yeah. Right above the attachments. It would be under like planning and zoning recommendations. You can add conditions there.
I'm just trying to, my biggest concern, obviously, there's another one following this. But since it's the same company, but a similar situation, that something needs to be added in there about keeping the roadway clean, especially in time, you know, when we do eventually get rain. You know, rain or frosty mornings seems to be dragging extra material out on the highway, especially on Highway 2, but.
Well, does number seven, look on page five, number seven, does that cover it? I mean, it's.
Well, it looks like they're, I mean, to me, that says that they're, they've got adequate measures to get trucks in and out of there to keep the highway from being congested.
Impacts to adjoining properties, to me, as well.
Well.
Or add it. I mean, I don't have a problem with adding it. I'm just.
So how would we word this? Like, I'm thinking condition eight, adequate measures to keep debris off of public roadways? Would that be sufficient? Karen, I'm looking at you.
Well, to be honest, that sounds just a little bit vague though, really adequate. I mean, who, I mean, if you're gonna say adequate, I would say probably, you know, as adequate as determined by the county, so that there's some sort of, who measures what adequate is really? And then leave.
Making sure the public roadways are kept clean?
Yeah, satisfactory to the county. I mean, you know, it's like, somebody's going to have to say, yes, it's okay, or no, you don't have to do anything about it, really. And since it's a roadway, it probably, and if it's a county roadway, it'd be our Dennis back there, really, so. But something so that you just don't use the word adequate or clean. It's got to be, you know, satisfactory to the county or.
And if that's, I mean, this one fits because it's County 5. And I know where, I mean, I know where you're going is Highway 2. I mean, can we put a rule on a state highway? I don't know. I'm just asking.
We don't govern, and we don't have jurisdiction over state highways. So even if you put something in there on a state highway, we really don't have any way to enforce that, really, because it's not a county road. So, I mean, you could put it then in there, but then it will really be up to their discretion, of their discretion to, the company's discretion to do or not do, because there really isn't anything that we could do about it. Because it's not our road. That'd be my opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions for Karen before she sits down?
Okay, have you got, am I the only one that's concerned about it? Or, I mean, if so, then we can move on. But I would like to add on condition number eight about keeping the public roadway clear. Of, do we have a standard though? I mean, that's the problem. I mean, is it just, keeping public roadway clear as determined by County Highway Department? Of debris, rocks, mud, whatever. Does that work? Stuff.
Yeah, I guess that would be fine, you know, because even if it's a state highway, you know, it's like, if it's gonna be a condition of their, their conditional use permit, then even if it's not a county road, I mean, we could say, hey, Dennis is determined it's not clean. It needs to be taken care of. We might consider revoking or suspending your cut or something like that, so.
Okay. So how do you want to put it there so Beth can write it?
Yeah, obviously leave whatever out, but you get the point.
I have number eight, keeping public roadway clean of mud, rocks, dirt, and debris as determined by County Highway.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and is that a motion then to approve with that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Discussion? None? Roll call, Beth.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so this next one is LU-0078-25. Again, Select Water Solutions LLC, they're requesting a conditional use permit for the existing special waste landfill, which also includes a T-NORM disposal site previously owned by Wisco. This is located in Sublot 1 and Sublot 2 of Section 26, Township 154 North, Range 104 West, being Round Prairie Township. They are undecided on their recommendation with no additional comments. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the existing special waste landfill, which includes a T-NORM disposal site previously owned by Wisco. Select Water Solutions has acquired the property and is required to reapply for the existing conditional use permit as they are non-transferable. The south parcel has been operational since approximately 2013, while the north parcel has been operational since 2012. The applicant is also working with various state departments to reissue Permit 0372-22717 and Permit W0349S0823D into their name. Access to the subject property is off of US Highway 2. Planning and zoning did hear this item on September 18th and did recommend approval eight to zero.
Okay, any additions on this one?
Yeah, I would add the same condition, number eight on there as the last one.
And is that a motion with that added?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded with the addition of number eight. Any discussion?
So, I mean, there's nobody here from Select?
Last time they called in, I did give them the call-in information, but I'm not sure if they were going to or not.
Okay, just curious if their T-NORM, I mean, that was approved here, but are they have to work with DEQ for, is, have they, do they have DEQ approval for that?
It's kind of goes hand in hand with our permit as well. They have to show that they have the, this permit in their name to get, to finalize all the permits for the state.
Remember when we went through all that, we had to decide before the scientists would decide?
So just for the public, I mean, the reason I'm concerned about the roadway is this, from the Wisco standpoint, has been a serious issue for years. They have drug mud out on the highway, and it's not just a little bit. If it rains, there's three quarters of a mile of debris on the highway. There, I know for a fact, there's three school bus routes that drive through there, and it needs to be addressed. Wisco did a few things. They did some cattle guards to try and knock mud off, but it never helped. They always said that they were going to pave and concrete and do all this stuff. Wheel washes, I had company, men call me from other companies that said, how can they do this? Because if we do this, we get dinged by DEQ for dragging mud out on the highway. So, I mean, I'm concerned. I, I hope that Select addresses it. Hopefully, this tells them that we're serious about making them address keeping the highway and the roadway safe and clean, because it's their responsibility to do that. So that's why I'm passionate about making sure that that condition's in there.
Okay, any other comments on that? All right, we have a motion and a second. No other discussion, roll call, please.
My computer did like a massive restart about then, so I didn't have.
Well, he put it, he put it under number eight, under the.
But it's, it's actually number four. Number eight is some stuff that planning and zoning has on, so it'll be condition number four.
Well, I must be looking at a different one, then, because.
Turn to the next page.
But, okay.
I just wanted to.
Got it, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Um, Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so the final ones that we have today are LU dash zero zero eight zero dash two five and LU dash zero zero eight one dash two five. Cherry Creek Water, on behalf of Benjamin Schmidt and Tri-Ded Ranch LLP, are requesting a zone change to the agricultural zoning district for MS twenty-two dash zero zero two, and a conditional use permit to construct a freshwater holding pond within the agricultural zoning district. This is located in MS twenty-two dash zero 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 one and zero 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 two of Section two, Township one fifty-six, North Range ninety-eight west, being Wheelock Township. We have not received comment back from the township on this item. The applicant is requesting a zone change to the agricultural zoning district for an approximately ten acre parcel known as MS twenty-two dash zero 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 two. In two thousand twenty-two, the parcel was changed to the rural residential zoning district for a single-family home to be built on the property. At this time, no home has been built or is planned to be built on the subject property. The applicant is also requesting a conditional use permit to construct an approximately one million four hundred and forty thousand BBL-lined, earth-emberted freshwater pond. The pond will be located on both of MS twenty-two dash zero 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 one and zero 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 two. It is their intent to re-subdivide the land in the future, so the pond will be fully contained within its own parcel. Purpose of this freshwater pond is to store freshwater to be utilized to aid and support oil well development within the area. Access to the subject property is off of one hundred and eighteenth Avenue Northwest. When Planning and Zoning Commission heard these items, they did recommend denial of LU dash zero zero eight zero dash two five with a vote of five to three, which would have been the zone change, and then recommended denial for LU dash zero zero eight one dash two five with a vote of six to two for the conditional use permit.
Is the applicant present?
Morning Commissioners.
Could you just introduce yourself for the record?
Grant Slick with Cherry Creek Water.
Okay. What do you have to add?
So during the planning and zoning meeting, we did hear concerns from the landowner immediately to the northeast, Mr. Rohrbach, about potential, basically, potential noise issues with the planned pond setup and the diesel pumps that would run there. So subsequent to the requested action from planning and zoning, we did put together an alternate proposal for consideration of the commissioners, which would actually reorientate the ponds where the pumps would sit on the south side of the berms of those ponds. And so the, the initial, the initial setup, we would have had it via pump sitting along the east side with the access right along the county road. With the new access, we would come in off the southeast corner and then configure the piping and the temporary diesel pump setup along the south side, so they would actually sit south of the, of the berms of the pond. The berms as constructed would be a minimum of ten feet, and the pumps are about also ten feet in height, the biggest pumps that we, we do run. We did try contact Mr. Rohrbach, but we were unsuccessful in that contact, so we have not been able to relay this kind of proposed alternate for consideration. And we did send it into Michelle, too, so.
You said temporary diesel pumps. Are they eventually going to be electric, or?
Correct. The long-term goal would always be moving to electric.
And it just takes time to get power in, especially in the, or the, the load that you would probably represent, that takes a little bit of time to get Montreal Williams to get the lines to you, is that what the?
Correct, yep. And there will be a lot of activity along Sixty-Sixth Street this coming year. There's over thirty wells planned east and west of the location, and so as we work through the power with McKenzie, or with the electric company, then we will transition to um, electric pumps, which would be much quieter, of course.
And then the idea of having the water right there is so then you don't have to truck the water in, right, and thus increasing truck traffic?
Correct, yep. And there would be buried pipe up to this location, and then lay flat pipe running east and west along Sixty-Sixth Street.
Did I read correctly as one point four million barrels?
Correct, so it, it's actually two cells, two separate ponds that would sit side by side, east and west.
Just rough figure, and any idea about how many semi-loads that would be?
One point three million divided by about one hundred and thirty thousand, so. Or sorry, one hundred and thirty per truck. So about a thousand trucks, if my math is correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that speaks volumes. If we're, if we're taking a thousand semis off the road, that's huge, but I, I, I don't know the numbers, any idea how many barrels per well?
There'd be.
About eight, eight thousand, something like that, isn't it? Nine?
There will be about eight million barrels moved up and down that road through next spring.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you for accommodating the landowner, even though you were unable to reach out to him. That's, that speaks volumes that you're trying to work with. Okay, good.
Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this?
I am the landowner in question there, and.
Can you state your name?
Ryan Rohrbach, sorry.
Ryan Rohrbach, thank you.
Um, and as far as what he's saying there, I thought, I really don't have a problem with that. I wouldn't have a complaint on, you know, noise-wise, sitting behind there, and then especially if they went to electric, that's my only complaint I had was noise.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and just, Ryan, just my experience would be, we had the lay flat, I'm, I'm thinking it was Select, but I, anyway, there was a pump about eight hundred-ish feet or so north of my place for two summers, and during the day, you really didn't even notice, but in the evening, if there was just a bit of a east, northeast breeze, you could hear it, but I mean, it was, it, I mean, it really was kind of minimal, so, I mean, it, that it's, it's kind of comforting, I guess, until they get to the electric, so I mean, it ain't like it's going to be, you know, parked by your bedroom window or something, you know, so.
And, and they did have a pump here, the other weekend ran for a couple days, which, I mean, it wasn't terrible. You could hear it, but it wasn't awful.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, let you know that it's a, you know, it ain't like it's some old four-cylinder Detroit out there screaming.
A question for the permit, permittee. Light plants, anything like that, going to be there?
There, there likely would be some light plants during the, that initial startup.
Okay, I mean, just in my experience, I mean, for neighbors or people traveling the roadway, if you guys have consideration for shine-down lighting, you know, just making sure that your lights don't shine out towards the road, I mean, as best you can, but some of them have been, next to me have been really, really bright, and they shine out towards the road, and it's hard to see.
Sure, yep. And our use of light plants is fairly minimal, once everything is set up and running. It's, there's usually, well, there's always a guy madding that pump at that location, and so they're just checking the meters and keeping the thing fueled on that temporary operation.
One, one quick last question. With all these water, freshwater ponds being placed, is there a future potential use for agriculture? Could these be transitioned to some kind of agricultural use in the future? I mean, having access to water is kind of a big deal.
Definitely. We actually have worked with landowners in other areas as well, and put in kind of the ag considerations moving forward, because this is fed by water that is used by ag districts down closer to the lake. Sim, you know, it's the same groundwater coming out, and then it's moved with buried pipe all the way north of Highway two, so there would definitely be future use for ag. And also, in all of these ponds, we do put in fire access, and so that way, like, I mean, just last year, right, so we, we always allow unlimited access for those emergency uses.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
With the, the, the information now, what are the wishes?
Would make a motion to approve LU dash zero zero eight zero dash two five and LU dash zero zero eight one dash two five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Michelle. Okay. And that looks like Beth's got a whole bunch of stuff for us.
The first thing I have is the memorandum of understanding with the State of North Dakota, the Secretary of State's office, and this is for our election equipment, and you'll see the number of, the equipment that we're talking about. We don't have the nine PEP links yet, but when my, a couple of my staff members go to school on October twenty-third, they'll get the PEP links at that time. So I just need authorization for the chairman to sign.
What's a PEP link?
Cellular router.
Thanks, Steve.
Gives them internet wherever they happen to be.
I was really kind of asking him, anyway.
I kind of sort of knew.
Okay, what are the wishes?
I'd move to approve this MOU and authorize the chairman to sign.
Is there a second? Second. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes. Motion carried.
And the next item I have, Brenda will fill you in on all this that she needs.
Good morning, Brenda Johnson with the Williams County Auditor's Office. It's that time of year again where the county did take tax foreclosure property on October second. We were able to get the list down to eleven properties this year, starting out from when I first started, approximately six hundred, so. What we need today is for you guys to set the minimum bid price for the properties. I do have a suggested minimum bid for you there on that spreadsheet on each property, which it does contain the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and a prorated amount for two thousand twenty-five, plus any penalties, interest, fees, or specials.
Okay. What are the wishes? I know in the past, we've gone with the minimum bid recommendation. Hopefully, get these things back on the tax rolls, but what are the wishes?
I would make a motion that we approve the minimum bid recommendation from staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, just one quick question on this. One, I'm trying to think, is if they're, the Granora one, is that a typo? The.
No, it is not a typo. It was a structure that was there in Granora. It's right next to their fire hall. It was very dilapidated and falling in. The owner did not take care of the the risk of the building falling in and, and it being open and that, so the city went in and tore it down and added on over forty-seven thousand dollars worth of specials. Um, I have already received notification from the City of Granora where there's a property that has delinquent specials on it. The city has thirty days per North Dakota Sentry Code to let us know that they wish to purchase that prior to any other party, and the City of Granora is going to do that on that property. Um, that will be, get presented to you fully at the next commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thanks, Brenda.
And then the next thing that we need for the tax foreclosure is we need you guys to set the hearing time for townships and cities to be able to come and object that minimum bid price that we set today. And typically, we will set it that next commission meeting in October. I believe we just set it at eight o'clock. That way, they know to be here for that commission meeting.
So that would be October twenty-first. What are the wishes? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're up.
Good morning. Uh, this is the, just a quick update on the opioid settlement. Um, why not the agreement that is before you is our, what would be our formal agreement with Upper Missouri District Health Unit with regards to how those dollars get spent? Uh, in the two thousand twenty-three legislative session, uh, they put some constraints in place into how dollars get moved back and forth between a political subdivision that retains their settlement funds and how you work with a, a district health unit. Uh, and so what this agreement lays out is that we would then have the authority to grant them dollars from the settlement funds, retain them for us to spend on our own agencies or departments, or otherwise grant them out to the community. Uh, so this is formalizing that part. It is one piece of the puzzle as we move forward. Uh, as of August, we have now collected just shy of a hundred thousand dollars, which was kind of our holding point before we actually move forward with spending. Uh, we get a little bit of dollars here and there, and it's been a little difficult to kind of navigate, uh, but we're at a good point for that, and will likely here in the near future move out with spending some dollars internally. So again, this agreement is that, that first, that first step to being able to do that, and I just knew a little bit more than I did at budget time, so wanted to provide that information in context of the agreement.
Thank you. What are the wishes?
Move to approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Uh, Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thanks, Lindsay.
Thanks.
I didn't know, did we miss any department heads? No, we're good. It's all right, it's just keep it rolling, I like it.
I mean, usually, there's nobody, but today would have been the day. All right, position report. You see we have a few positions that we're seeking approval to fill. You'll note that under the administration label, the community engagement technician is a little different term. Uh, you see that Gabby has left our employment and that communication specialist position. We, we're gonna, we're gonna try and reorient that a little bit. And so different title, we're gonna distribute duties a little differently between community engagement and communications. But other, it's that, it's really that same position, just in a different way. So requesting approval to fill those three positions, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Beth.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, North Dakota sentry code uh, requires or allows for each county to have three representatives to the state fair committee, state fair board. Uh, one is from the extension agent's office, one is from the county fair board, and one is appointed by the county commission. I have been the delegate in the past, and so I'm asking that you reappoint me as the delegate. We'll tell you that this is a meeting of a few hundred people in which they give an update. I'm not always able to attend this meeting, uh, but I'm also lobbying that they make it available virtually. Then I would certainly be able to attend more easily. So asking you appoint me as the state fair delegate.
So moved.
Second. That was quick. That was, yeah.
Right. Or, or you could nominate from amongst yourselves.
No, no. Don't, we can stop talking.
I thought perhaps Beau wanted the.
It's been moved and seconded. Move along. Let's, uh, let's take a roll call.
Oh?
Absolutely, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
I'll try and sell it better next time. Great, we have a, kind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take these separately. Central Square contract. This is really not a contract. This is a purchase that we did not budget for, and so I'm bringing it on behalf of dispatch. As you know, we have not only our primary dispatch, but we have a backup location, which is a, a, a real necessity in a time of emergency, but not very common. It's hard to get one put together. We just happen to be able to reuse our old spot as a backup. And so this is actually an upgrade to some software. But, and, and that software upgrade across all the primary dispatches is paid through the North Dakota Association of Counties and their agreement through statewide nine-one-one. But because we have a backup center, we have to pay separately for that. And so I just wanted to call this out one because we didn't know it was coming and so we didn't budget for it. It is eleven thousand three hundred and ten dollars. But also just, I wanted to point out, so it's not a surprise in the future, that sometimes we will incur expenses, not for the primary, but we will have to cover them for the backup. So uh, it, contract is a strong word for this. I didn't even have Karen review it because it's really just an agreement to purchase the subscription upgrade for the software. So I think separately you want to approve this because the next one's a little more complicated. And really it's just a motion for the chairman to sign and, and we'll cover it out of the dispatch budget.
Okay, what are the wishes?
I'll make a motion to uh, pay the support agreement, the eleven thousand three hundred and ten dollars to Central Square.
Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, in May twenty twenty-four, we began talking here at commission meetings. And then again, actually in September twenty-four, we had a discussion about uh, upgrades to the infirmary at the jail. Through both budget cycles, we've had some discussions about upgrades to the infirmary as well. And, and in, uh, on September third, twenty twenty-four, you appointed a, a CMAR selection committee. So construction manager at risk selection committee. And so now we've gone through that process and, and here's where we're at. We've never provided you any kind of a firm number and, and of course, you've been hearing about this primarily from the sheriff. But uh, there has not been a firm number because the uh, the plan and design and schematic has never been finalized up until just recently. So we have proceeded through design. We had a CMAR uh, process happen. So we go out for an RFQ. We ask for contractors who would qualify as construction managers at risk to put in uh, qualification documents. And then the sentry code says we narrow down to three and we have interviews, but we only had one application or we only had one submission, and that is JE Dunn. So we would recommend coming out of the selection committee. Not really a lot of work to sort out when you only have one applicant. And so we are recommending that JE Dunn be awarded the contract for CMAR. Let me talk to you about price though first, because you, you, you all have a board, have never actually heard the full price story, and I just want you to have that. And then I'm going to be looking for permission to proceed on the project with the maximum number. We're hoping to get the price down a little bit. And then permission for our attorney to engage with, with JE Dunn to get that CMAR contract completed, have the chairman sign it. And then because we've seen some price changes since early twenty-four, we're gonna have to update the contract with the architect as well. So that's where we're headed, but let me give you a little bit of information. So what we're doing is repurposing the dormitory space into infirmary space. Really, our need for this was um, illustrated during the pandemic. And so it's been, although it's been a couple of years, we've been talking about it here. It's really been five years that the sheriff's office has been looking at this as a priority. And so the infirmary project is about thirty-two hundred square feet. But the price for that area does come in to be just over three million dollars. We carried in the budget two point seven million, and so we're a little short. There is some price escalation. We actually didn't update that number as maybe we, we did come to understand there were some increases in pricing, but we just held the same number in the budget. As a part of this, because we're gonna have contractors in working in what is a, a secure area, we're going to get two other little projects done. We're going to upgrade the laundry room or, or just really refurbish the laundry room after many years of doing many, many people's laundry over time. And we're going to replace floor in the intake area, which gets a lot of traffic. Anybody who comes into jail rolls through that intake area. And so it's a good time while we've got, of course, we do a whole bunch of background checks and, and we know who's, who's doing this work. So it makes sense to get it all done at once. We have money in the jail improvement fund to cover those expenses. We knew they were coming. I, I spoke with the uh, EAPC is the architect on this project. I spoke with them yesterday and we were able to find some savings. We have a, we have a contract in place for them, but now we've seen some price escalation. If we just went with some straight percentages, it would have been a little more than we're gonna end up paying them. So Karen will renegotiate or will, will write up and, and renegotiate that contract. And then there are two contingencies that in my conversation with JE Dunn uh, yesterday, but a little on Friday too, there, there's about four hundred thousand dollars in what I would call uh, owner contingency or owner uh, little set aside money. It is called owner contingency and then FF and E furniture, fixtures and equipment that we would hold for a little while, just to make sure that we understand the full scope of the project. That, that helps us have a little cushion. And it's five percent of the project, so it's a number that's defined. So in total then, this project would be, uh, JE Dunn gives it to us as four point four, no, four point three four five million dollars to do this work in the secure space of the jail. It is always more expensive to do this work in this area because there are all sorts of, um, it's just trickier. Here, we, we will contain the inmate population to a certain degree from having access here, but we also limit their, where they can work, how they can work. It, it just gets a little trickier in this space. So if I look at the cash that we have put aside in various places to do various parts of this project, what, what we will need to transfer in from the general fund, which we did not budget for in twenty twenty-six, is about six hundred thousand dollars if it is the worst case scenario. Now, in my conversations with people, I think we're gonna have some pre-construction meetings and look to find a way to, to maybe bridge that gap a little bit. But for now, I wanted you to know, we've been planning this. We think it's a high priority. The sheriff is here and can speak to that if he, if he wants to, or if you want him to. Uh, but, but there might have to be a transfer if everything was the most expensive that we would anticipate it to be. At Dr. Christie, of course, we have those funds to do that, but we, we didn't have that plan in place yet.
Any questions for Helen? And if there are, you just didn't listen. She explained it very thoroughly.
The architect is EAPC.
So what are the wishes, gentlemen?
It's a bummer when you have to house inmates and spend that kind of money, but uh, clearly it's a high priority. I would make a motion to support the, the infirmary construction at.
Yeah, so I think a not to exceed, if you want to include in that motion, permission to proceed, not to exceed four point three four five.
Not to exceed four point three four five million dollars.
Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? How, what was the total length of time for that to, do you, I mean, any just? Oh.
Four and a half months, says JE Dunn.
Would it be cheaper if we could keep people from breaking the law for four and a half months, so we could just get this project done?
Yes, and if you would let the jail laundry come to your house, so that we could just do it.
Just put out a public notice for four and a half months, behave yourselves.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and then I would like a motion for staff to negotiate and finalize that CMAR contract and to update the EAPC contract and for the chairman to be able to sign that. Now, now there will be, once we get through some of those pre-con meetings, there will be a, a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, which typically we come back to the board with. And so I think that would happen again. I think that's the final step in signing the contract, which you all could see if you wanted.
Okay. Move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign.
Is there a second?
Well, second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great, that's all I have for you, unless you have something. Oh, Karen would like a specific motion to award JE Dunn as the CMAR.
Okay. Can I get that a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Cory?
Yes.
Beau?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Karen, I was thinking the same thing. Not at all. Okay, anything else? That's it, Helen?
I think that's it.
Okay, looks to me like no further business. We are adjourned at nine oh four.